This is our presentation of our proposed FY18 budget and warrant articles. I am Mary Lou Mullins, Chairperson of the Sohegan Cooperative School Board. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce my fellow board members. To my left is Steve Coughlin from Amherst, Dave Chen from Amherst, Pim Grandstra from Mount Vernon, Howard Brown from Mount Vernon, and Peter Maresco from Amherst. I'd also like to introduce now our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Peter Warburton, for some further introductions.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you all for coming out tonight. A reminder that we are being livestreamed tonight, and it's also going to be archived on our SAU 39 website. So if you type in SAU 39, it comes up on the bottom, on the left-hand side, you'll see the words livestream. You can click that. All of our board members, all of our board meetings are archived there, as well as this meeting. So, again, thank you for coming out tonight. What does Yogi Berra say? Life is ninety percent showing up. So I appreciate that. And I'd like to introduce a few people for myself as well. So far right, my far right is Danae Mello. Although it says Danae Marata, it's actually Danae Mello. Want to make sure you knew that. Rob Scully is our Principal for Sohegan High School. Adam Steele is our Business Administrator. Also in the audience, if SAU personnel would stand up for a second, please, so I could introduce you. Christine Landwirle is our Director of Curriculum and Professional Development. Meg Bochamp is our Director of Student Services. John Robichaud way up back is Director of Buildings and Grounds. Any other district personnel here that I'd like to introduce, or would like to be introduced? Mr. Shakrin, Bruce Shakrin back here is our Director of Educational Technology. And I'll stop there. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I also want to just introduce Lisa Eastland. She is the Chair of our Advisory Finance Committee. And Lisa, if there are any members here tonight, I know you're not voting tonight, but, or meeting tonight, but if there are any members you want to introduce?
Uh, no, I can tell you their names, though. Here's Mont Vernon is Jacob Warren and Jane Jane. So if you're a born citizen, you can talk to them. We also have Mark Calley, Ellen Grushen, and Sue Zamchar, and myself, who are the administrators. So Susan Sanders here, if you want to speak to any of those, right away.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And thank you all for being here tonight. This is an important process to be a part of and to understand. There will be an opportunity for public comment after the budget is presented, and then again after all of the warrant articles are presented. We value community input, and that actually is the intention of this hearing, is to get feedback. So please feel free to use the microphone and state your name and address at the appropriate time. So to lay the groundwork, or as Steve likes to say, set the table, we wanted to give some background on the thinking behind these, the numbers we're going to present tonight. Our SAU 39 Board, made up of the Sohegan District as well as Mount Vernon and Amherst districts, took on the endeavor of creating a strategic plan a couple of years ago. After much thought and a lot of input, we were able to summarize the desires and needs of our communities going forward. We still have work to do on the implementation and measuring of these goals, but this slide shows an overarching focus that we keep in mind when developing budgets. We also look specifically at who we are as a school and how we can best provide our students with the skills needed to graduate and be successful in a 21st century, ever-changing world, and stay true to our beliefs and educational practices. You'll see some examples here, such as personalization, high-quality instruction, extended learning experiences, a comprehensive program of studies, and a community reflecting democratic principles and student voice, just to name a few. Who we are always starts and ends with a student experience. The needs of the students and what's best for our students has to stay in the forefront of our minds in everything that we do, including the budget. That's the right one. We want every student engaged, supported, and challenged, and that's primarily what drives our staffing requirements when we, when developing budgets each year. In addition, we have fixed costs, such as contractual obligations and mandated expenses, that we don't have a lot of control over. And lastly, there are discretionary items that we have somewhat more control over. And in a simplified nutshell, that comprises our proposed budget process. Although before the Board even sees Draft One, there's much scrutiny from the Principal, Business Director, and Superintendent. Then there are Drafts Two, Three, and sometimes Four. And each draft is also scrutinized by our Advisory Finance Committee. So Article Two asks for your support for our proposed budget of eighteen million, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. This represents a little over two percent increase over last year's approved budget. Article Two also states that should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be seventeen million, nine hundred and three thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This next slide shows a visual pie chart of the makeup of that proposed number. You can see that sixty-nine percent of that pie is made up of salaries and benefits, which is very typical of a district budget. Steve will talk in more detail about the proposed and default budget, but we wanted to start by giving you a general overview. Now, this slide is pretty important because it really tells most of our budget story this year. We understand that increases in budgets equate to an increase in tax dollars, and we work very hard to do everything we can to thoughtfully control costs. However, this year was particularly disheartening because we started our budget process with almost a million dollars in mandatory increases. That equated to a five-point-four-four percent increase before we even bought an extra piece of paper. In order to get that increase down to the proposed two percent overall increase, we had to cut three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars worth of expenses. This slide shows a breakdown of those mandatory increases that we were forced to start with. We were not immune to the increase in healthcare costs that many people are facing, and it represents a one-point-five percent increase in our overall budget. Over one-point-four percent of the nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase came from mandated special education costs. We are also in Year Two of a five-year transportation contract with stipulated increases attached. And funding for New Hampshire retirement continues to be pushed down to the local level, causing an almost one percent increase to our budget this year. We also negotiated a contract with our PPC this year, and after four years of virtually no cost of living increases, we negotiated a small increase that Steve will speak to more later in the presentation. There was also an increase in Sohegan's apportionment of the SAU budget, and that was due, again, to healthcare and retirement cost increases. You see here some of the adjustments that we made to items that we had more control over. We reduced the budget by over six-hundred-thousand dollars through reductions to our staff. Paving is one of the only outstanding items left to be completed from our GAIL report, which was a comprehensive facilities review that our Board commissioned in 2010. We removed this item from our operating budget and put it on a warrant article, allowing the voters to make the choice as to whether this project is to be completed. While we do think it is an important project, given the increases we faced this year, we thought it was a prudent thing to do. Technology infrastructure actually represents an increase this year. However, we felt it was important in order to keep our students current and successful in the world they're living in. And there was an additional increase of point-four-seven, point-four-seven percent to the budget for other discretionary costs, bringing our net reduction to five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars. So as I mentioned, much of our cost savings was due to staff reductions. These reductions were thoughtfully made, and based mostly on our projected decrease in enrollment. This graph shows enrollment trends from 2002 out through 2026, and FY18 is boxed in there in red. So you can see that we're expecting a decrease in enrollment of, we, our enrollment projections for next year is seven-hundred-and-seventy-five students, and that's down from last year's projected of eight-hundred-and-thirteen students. So here we are showing the breakdown of those staff reductions. There were four teaching positions that were eliminated, representing a savings of four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars. There was a half-time administrative position equating to four-hundred, forty-eight-thousand dollars, a facilities position representing sixty-three-thousand dollars, and a paraprofessional position representing sixty-four-thousand dollars. These reductions bring the total to over twenty-six positions that our Board has cut in the last four years, including one-and-a-half administrative positions. And I also wanted to note that there was a reduction last year at the SAU level of an administrative curriculum position, and this pushed more of those responsibilities down to our building-level administrators. So again, you see here the overall impact. We were able to bring the original five-point-four-four percent mandated increase down to a two-point-zero-seven percent increase, bringing our proposed budget to eighteen million, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Steve Coughlin, who will explain the proposed operating and default budget in more detail, as well as the remaining warrant articles.
Wow, you talk fast. All right. So I, my, my next two slides are two different views of the budget. This first one is by, sort of by the things that we buy with it. So you can, and sorted in order of magnitude. So you can see that the largest single thing that we buy with this budget is people, in the form of salaries. And you can see there that it's eight, eight-point-six million. And with those salaries go the benefits, retirement, and so on, healthcare. And the next, the next largest item, the final million-dollar item is, is transportation. And then the rest of the categories of expense fall down from there. So I'll point out, interesting fact, our, the SAU cost gets apportioned among the three districts, Amherst, Mount Vernon, and Sohegan, based on two items, a number of students enrolled, and the assessed valuation of the district. As the enrollments fall in Amherst and Mount Vernon, as you saw in, in the trend chart earlier, Sohegan being, having the older students, they passed through us last, still has more students from the earlier bubbles that have now left those districts. So our assessment goes up because we still have the students and the other two districts don't. So we, we actually wind up absorbing more of the SAU costs until those students leave us, and we get more leveled out as we used to be. The next way to look at the budget is by function. This is how the state looks at our, at our, at our budget, and how we report it in all our, in our budgeting process and in our reporting process. So this has the categories you're perhaps familiar with us seeing us report and other districts report, year after year. Our regular education, special education, vocational education, and all the other things we do. Athletics, transportation, student services, again, that SAU cost, the administrative cost, and so on. So numbers add up to be the same. That's the good news. You can look at it one way or the other. And so I'll just leave it at that. I'll let you absorb that for a moment before I move on. We'll talk about cost per pupil because that's always an interesting topic that people want to talk about. We use for our cost-per-pupil computation, the state's computation. It, it has pluses and minuses to doing that. The two big pluses are, the state tells us a standard way to do it, and it tells every other district a standard way to do it, so we can do it. And it, every district has to report their cost per pupil using this same methodology, so we can do comparisons against other districts. This is the trend of our cost-per-pupil history since '01, it looks like. And you can see that, so Sohegan's the blue line, the state average is the red line. You can see that, that both have been increasing over time. You can see that Sohegan increased faster than, than the state average did over time, until about FY14, when we started paying more attention to our cost per pupil relative to other districts, and started to manage the budget more closely, not just to meet student needs, but also to be mindful of how our expenses were compared to other districts. So the trend lines have started to converge again, and so that's a, a thought as we do our budgeting, that we want to have our cost per pupil more in line with the statewide average. Not something you can do overnight, but you can see that we are, we're trying to move in the same direction. And you might say, "Well, there's a two percent increase in the budget this year. That is not going to help." Almost all of that two percent increase is going to impact every district in the state, proportionally. So the state cost per pupil average is going to make a, a nice leap up next fiscal year because they, everyone's going to have to deal with those same increases and expenses that we have to deal with. So it's not that we're alone in getting these giant increases, but everyone's going to have to endure them. Just a quick slide to show you where we are relative to some other districts. If, if you squinted carefully and thoughtfully at the last graph, you're seeing the state, you would see the state average was roughly fifteen thousand per student, which is roughly where Milford is. So everybody to the left of Milford in this graph is less than the state average, everybody to the right of Milford in this graph is above the state average, and there we are in green, sticking out as part of the group that's above the state average. Not, not the worst by any means, but not, certainly not at average. And sometimes people want to know, "What the heck is Dresden?" Dresden is Hanover. They have a fancy name. Finally, we can, we now know, the official, we now know, our official cost per pupil for FY16, which was the year that ended last June, that was eighteen thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. We can project what our cost per pupil, per pupil will be for this year. We're about halfway through it. It will be in the range that's shown here, about, from, between seventeen-eight and eighteen-one. And why would it be a range? Because the cost per pupil is, is computed at the end of the year based on two things that you can sort of guess at, but you can't be sure about until the end of the year. How much money you really spent. So every year, we don't always spend all the money that we receive, so that, so the cost is variable up until the end of the year. And the per pupil is also variable up until the end of the year because kiddos come and go all the time. So that, we don't know the number of students that we will have as a final average count for the whole year until the whole year is finished. So that's why we can only project a range for where we'll be finishing six months from now. And we can also project with even more uncertainty where we might be at the end of FY18. If this proposed budget is adopted and the number of students show up, who we are projecting are going to show up, then we'll be in the range of nineteen-two to nineteen-six. But we can be pretty good about knowing how much money we're going to spend, and it won't go higher than whatever you allow us to. The number of students that show up is, is unknowable until opening day is the first time we even have a chance of guessing what it might really be. And with that, I will end the presentation portion and turn the podium back over to Mary Lou and allow for public comments.
So we're, is there any public wishing to comment? And if so, as I said, the microphone is there, and just step up and give your name and address, if you would.
Good evening. Jeannie Lu, Three School Street. My question is around whether there's enough. I understand that this last year, because we caved to pressure, there were some severe cuts in the budget, and the budget had to be frozen at some point because we were concerned about not having enough money to last the, this academic year. So I'm concerned about, I know your efforts to, to make cuts so that the, the increase would be minimal, but I'm concerned about whether there is enough, and if you all feel confident about that, so that we don't have the same situation occur next year.
Well, I think last year, we didn't expect to be in this position where, I believe it was October, we ended up with a budget freeze. We knew from our Business Director that it was going to be tight, but didn't expect to be that tight. We feel like we budgeted pretty tight again this year, but we don't ever budget with the intention of going over, because as you know, Jeannie, that legally, we can't do that. So I don't know if our Business Director has any more to add to that.
No. I, I agree. The question is well-taken. We're confident that we've budgeted appropriately for this ensuing fiscal year, and, and don't anticipate any of the same issues. With that said, certainly there are things that can happen after the budget is set that are unanticipated, but we're, we're fairly confident we've thought through those contingencies, and we feel confident that we have enough budgeted.
Margaret McCabe, Amherst. I'd like to make comments in refuting that, because I came to the Board in November with an analysis looking at our historical ratio of how many teachers we had and our overall staffing ratios. And I recently wrote an article, letter to the editor, in the Amherst Citizen, if people were able to read it. And we are less efficient than we were at our peak enrollment. And it continued to go down every year, the, the teacher-student ratio kept going down. We were at eleven-point-one-four. I think we went to a low of a nine-point-one, and the public said, "Wait a minute, we're going in the wrong direction." Okay? And it affects the workload. And we want our teachers to do a good job, and we, but we don't want it so that we have to have more than we need. And when I looked at the ratios, I came to the conclusion that there's still ten more staff that should come out if we want to be as efficient as we were. And if you look at the cost per pupils this year, and I know everyone gets confused on it, but just look at, I, today, I looked at the schools that are a hundred size, a hundred pupils, larger or smaller than us, with the new data that's come out. And we are about three-thousand dollars more on a cost-per-pupil basis than similar-sized schools. And that was the, and so, and we're overstaffed, and that's why we're more. And it's grown over a number of years, and we haven't addressed that. And so that's why we have the gap. And so the best, I think, is, we could do is not to create a bigger gap, and you're showing us a cost per pupil going into the nineteenth again, nineteen thousand. And when you add the all-in, which I'll do at the end of this presentation, when I see all the warrant articles, we're going to be over twenty-three thousand per student.
Thank you for your opinions and comments, Maggie. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will turn it back over to Steve Coughlin.
I'm back. We have three warrant articles that will be presenting in addition to the budget. The first is, just to set the stage here, the first will be the agreement between the staff and the Board for the contract for next year. The second is going to be a contribution to the, to our Expendable Trust for Maintenance, which is, we propose every year and has been supported every year. And the third is the paving that Mary Lou mentioned, which we moved out of the main budget and into the, a separate warrant article. So I'll start with the agreement with, with PPC. This is the article that will be presented. And it is, I'll talk about it a little more in the next slide, but I'll just talk very slowly while you read this. It is going to be a one-year agreement only, and the incremental cost, if approved by the voters, will be ninety-four thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. So this was one of the most difficult negotiations that I've ever been in, and I've been part of the negotiating team since roughly 2005 or 2006. And I think the reason it was difficult, one of the reasons it was difficult, was we started off the year with these, these uncontrolled increases that were coming from other places. So we, we and the staff knew that it was going to be very difficult to, to do a lot in terms of an agreement that would satisfy everybody, given the cost pressures that were being felt in the main budget. So we got to where we are. And I'll remind you, part of where we are is, we are now in the second year of the last agreement, which was a two-year agreement. And in that agreement, both professional and support staff took zero percent increases over the last two years. So that's, that was weighing heavily on everyone's mind also as we negotiated. So we have a one-year contract because we didn't want to do any more. We want to see how things shook out and what new exciting, unexpected costs or savings might appear in future budgets. We've agreed to a fixed seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar raise for almost all teachers. And I say almost all because there's, there's some teachers who are, we changed the, the salary scale some years ago, and there are some teachers who are off the scale because of where they were when we, when we made the changes. And so they, so they're being paid higher than they would be if they were on the scale, but it's very hard to go to someone and say, "We're cutting your salary because we negotiated that everyone else is going to do well and you're going to get less." So instead, what we do is, we limit them to half of what everyone else gets. So if you're on the scale, you'll get a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar raise. If you are off the scale, you'll get half of that, which is three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which makes a huge increase in your paycheck spread out over twenty-two paychecks. Similarly, for the support staff, the, the support staff will get a two percent increase, unless, we also have some support staff who are off the scale, they also, the same rule applies, they get one percent, so that the, the intention is to sort of drive everybody to converge onto the scale eventually. Support staff, of course, typically make less money than, than, than professional staff, so the impact of things like healthcare increases, the sixteen percent increase in healthcare bites them more heavily. As you may remember from the earlier slide, benefits, specifically health insurance, is a huge cost. Over the last two contracts we've negotiated, we have made steps to encourage staff members to move to lower-cost health plans. Saves them money and saves us money. We've continued that trend. There are significant changes in the district co-pays for the high-cost health plans, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield Point of Service Plan, that incent people, staff members, to move towards the lower-cost health plan, which is an HSA, sometimes called, sometimes called, called by the vendor luminos. And we came up with a split of, there's also a mid-range HMO plan. So we came up with different percentage district contributions for all of those plans that, A, save us real money in the next year because we have a lower contribution overall, and B, incent people, staff members, to look carefully at their healthcare costs and move to the lower-cost plan because they will save themselves money as well as us money. And if we see those moves, which we believe we will, we're already hearing that we're going to, our healthcare costs will be further reduced. We'll have fewer people on the higher-cost plan over time. In the last contract, we already sunsetted that high-cost plan. No one new can, can join it, and all we can do is try to encourage people to get off it now. So it's not growing, and we're trying to shrink it as fast as we can. Because typically, we have wide-ranging agreements. We did not get a wide-ranging agreement this time because of the issues I spoke about earlier. We've agreed already to come back early and start negotiating next year on the next agreement. And we are looking to address some critical issues. And the most critical of those are, as Maggie alluded to, I think she called it staffing efficiency. I would call it teacher workload. So, that's been teed up. Everyone's aware that we're going to be talking about that, which gets also to class loads. So, those are items that we all agree we need to discuss and wrestle with in the next contract. We also have a system called career growth, which is how staff members are compensated for continuing to be lifelong learners. We've made a couple of small structural changes to that, sort of as a token, and we want to do more in the next contract. But that should slow the rate of cost increase, the district, depending on which options the individual teachers who do career growth take, somewhere between 18 and 27%. So, that will address the growth in salary costs over time. It won't have any big impact in the first year. The next article is that contribution. I'm going to do all three at the end. Yeah, we have time. So, that was my longest speech. I'll be much shorter going forward. We'll be done in a minute. The next is the expendable trust, which we use for maintenance, issues that were not anticipated in the budget, that are emergencies, or that are just so plainly, obviously, good to do, that we can also dip in there for construction costs if we need them, that will save us money or otherwise solve a major problem that we didn't anticipate. Every year, we ask you, the voters, to give us $65,000 to add to that fund. We don't, that is not from direct taxation. It is only if we have a surplus at the end of the year. The first thing that happens is 65, or whatever, if it's less, is taken out of that surplus and put into the expendable trust. Then the rest is eligible to be returned to the taxpayers. So, that, current balance in that is just under $175,000. We've always had a target of $200,000 for that for quite a long time. It's recently been recommended to us that times have changed, things are more expensive, and the school's gotten older. So, the new recommendation to us has been that we have a $250,000 target for that fund. So, 65 gets us most of the way there. Finally, again, as Mary Lou said, the last major item in the Gail report that has not been addressed is repaving of our roadways. That was always recommended to be a three-year phased approach. Last year, we began that last bit with Phase 1. You may notice some of, you can't see them now because of the snow, but some of the roads and parking lots around the building are in better shape than others. The plan was always to do Phase 2 this year. And if we hadn't had all those unanticipated expenses come at us, it's likely we would have talked about at least leaving it in the budget again, as it was last year. Because we have these other costs we have to absorb, we made the hard choice to make this an option, that you, the voters, can decide whether we fund it or not. So, the second phase of the paving is now a warrant article for $150,000. And we'll be coming back next year again. Hopefully, this will pass, and we'll finish the paving and be done with the facilities improvements that go back. By then, we'll have been over eight years to meet all the needs that were addressed or identified back in 2010. So, brings me to the last slide. If everything happens, if the budget and the three additional warrant articles are all adopted, you can see the impacts here for Amherst and Mont Vernon. So, the average home would see, in Amherst, $172 increase in taxes, and the average home in Mont Vernon would see a $309 increase. And that's based on what I believe are the latest average home values, which is 352,000 in Amherst and 300,000 in Mont Vernon, and also assumes no increase in valuation of homes, of the towns between now and then. And that also assumes revenues that we will talk about at the deliberative sessions but aren't appropriate here. So, now I'm done talking. I'm going to sit down.
Okay, so that brings us to public comment time again. Yep, go ahead, Mag. You know I see.
Yeah, my name is Richard Zum. I've lived in Amherst for probably 40 years, whatever 1972 is. And I've seen these rates skyrocket. And I guess I have two questions. What are these mandatory things you're talking about and the state-run things, so state-mandated ones? I'd like, could you just elaborate on that, what it is?
Yeah, we have a slide on it. If you go back to the...
Could you just elaborate on it, though, because I can't read it from back here?
Yep. So, actually, let me grab my...
I mean, how does the state get to mandate this? You can't say no?
Well, yeah, the short answer is no. It's...
Okay, so you've answered that question. I'll just...
What's that?
You can, I'll accept that answer because we just don't control our destiny. But I also want to know why the default budget couldn't be like 15 million. How did you come up with that number? What I see here is 79 million. Who sets that number?
It's set by the, the formulation is set by the state, and we have to follow the formulation of the state. And again, our business director could probably explain it in more detail than me, but we had a slide, Steve? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. At the deliberative, we always have a slide with the definition of the cost per pupil. I thought it was in our public hearing slides also, but there's a state-set formulation that we follow to get the default budget.
So, you have no control over it?
Not that, yeah, go ahead.
I'll talk about deliberatives, so I might as well practice now. The, so the idea that, because in the old days, when we did town meeting or school meeting, we'd argue about individual line items and all agree on, you know, dollar by dollar, what went in and out. When you vote in the ballot box, you need some answer if the answer is no to the proposed budget. So, we have this default budget. And the idea is, the default budget is mechanically produced according to this broad formula the state gives us, which is essentially the stuff you did last year, plus anything that's required by contract or law. So, many of these mandatory increases are by contract or by law. Up or down, they almost always go up, they hardly ever go down, but if they do go down, we do take them down. And then also reduced by anything you did last year that was a one-time thing. So, this default budget, the two big one-time things that we did, we had money in this current year's budget for a storage facility. That was a one-time thing. Turns out, we're not even going to do it anyway. So, that's out for next year. And the paving was a one-time thing because we moved it to the warrant article. So, those are the two big one-time things. And also, we are, as Mary Lou spoke about, reducing the number of staff members so they're not an ongoing expense, so they're out of the default budget as well. But everything else is continue business as usual. Heating oil's going to go up, you need more heating oil, except we use gas. Gas is going up, you need more gas. Health insurance is going up by contract, we have to accommodate that. New Hampshire retirement, which is state-mandated, we have to accommodate that, and so on. So, that's how we and everybody else who does official ballot voting gets to their default budget.
I'm sure you work very hard at this, but as a citizen who's lived here and pays this, these rates, and my kids have been gone for many years, I find it hard to understand. What if the proposed budget was 15 million? Would the default be like 14,900?
Yeah, if we had taken a lot of stuff out of the proposed budget, then it's the general rule of thumb, and you know, we have to look at each one individually to see how it applies. Yeah, it would have been lower as well.
You see where we're going with this? Why can't you take more out of it to get it more consistent with the state averages? If the state mandates this, and we're higher than the state, why don't we comply with the state? Your non-regular budget.
The state average of costs is an average of every school district's educational philosophy and the cost to implement it. So, we have our philosophy, which includes the idea of each teacher knowing students well, which means not so many teachers per student. You don't have classes of 30 students. Typically, you want to have a class size around 20.
But those can all be changed. That's because nobody has any input to that except this group. I would like to see those numbers come down. I don't see why it's all that complicated.
Okay.
So, can somebody begin to put some other options in here besides these two things so that the people who are voting on this can maybe have more input to it?
The only, the...
People have to pay for it. I don't mean vote, but people have to pay for it.
Vote and pay, vote and pay. Although more people pay than vote.
Well, I understand it's not simple, but I will relinquish my discussion, but I think it's out of control. And it's not going to get any better. We're going to have other things coming up next year, the year after that. I, as a person, have to ask myself, is it worth it to me to live in Amherst, to pay these taxes and get nothing from it? And a lot of my friends think that way. And I also think tying these rates to the housing market is complete nonsense. That's a possible thing, a future thing. It has no function in reality. So, I'd like to see it more tied to some definitive benefit that these students are getting for this money, not the houses going up. That makes no sense at all to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is it still public time?
Yes.
I have, I have, Margaret McCabe Amherst, I have a few things. The first thing is related to food services. There is about 15,000 added in the line, and then it's also carried across to the default budget. And it's carried across in two places. You're increasing the food services by 14,000 something, and then you're carrying it across in the food service fund for 15. And in other years, the board has told us that food service is supposed to be operating on a break-even basis. But for the last few years, we've been transferring money from the general fund into the food service to supplement it. So, my question is, did you look at the staffing in the food service fund to see if they can reduce staff? If they're not selling lunches and they're not buying lunches, there's probably not, you know, maybe there's a way they can reduce staff to make that a break-even proposition. But I'm also challenging the way it's presented in the default budget, Adam. Okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is related to the PPC. I think my understanding is, is that if you have come to an agreement, you have to put it forward as the warrant that we're seeing. Is that correct? But my question is, can it be split for the cost for the teachers versus the cost for the support staff? Because maybe I want to support the teachers and give them an increase, and maybe I want to support the support staff. I don't have the option if they're together. So, my question is, can that be split into two separate warrants?
I'm going to let Steve answer. I've never encountered that while I've been on the board, so Steve is going to address that.
All right, and I'll do PPC first, then over to Adam or Rob or somebody else on the food service one. So, if you also attend the Amherst board meeting later tonight, 14 minutes, you'll notice they negotiate separately, the support staff and the professional staff. So, theirs are always split. We happen to negotiate as a single group with a single contract, so that's the way we've negotiated, and that's the way it gets presented. If we want to split it in the future, we would have to choose to negotiate with each group separately. So, we came to separate agreements that would be ordered on separately. But that's not what we've, not what we've done since I've been doing this, so roughly '06-ish. And I don't remember before then. Somebody else has to do the food service one.
So, the short answer is, yes, we are in the process of looking at staffing in our school nutrition services department. It's, and those changes are not reflected in the budget at this time. The food service budget is a unique artifact within our operating budget in that, as you mentioned, Maggie, it is meant to be independent of, it's not supposed to affect taxes. So, it operates as a profit and loss entity within our organization. And in a sense, if we had a mad increase in number of students buying hot lunch, and we needed to hire more staff that were unbudgeted, that's allowed and that's permissible because of the nature of the school nutrition services budget, working independently of the general fund. Conversely, if there's a dramatic decrease in participation, we can also adjust staff during the year and adjust whatever. What's important is that the fund itself operates in a net positive and doesn't have a negative effect on the general fund. As you pointed out, that has been the case the last couple of years. I can tell you that is a priority to ensure that does not happen again. And you're exactly right that the key factor there is staffing. It's not food costs, it's not supply costs, it's not equipment costs. It's almost always staffing and the associated benefits.
Is this the last opportunity to speak? Because then I want to give the total. Are you finished?
Mary Lou's telling me something. I miss what you said. Can you say it again?
Is this the last opportunity to speak? Okay. So, I've taken the four warrant articles that you have, the operating budget, the paving, the school maintenance, and the PPC warrant articles. They total 18,324,186. So, if all of these warrant articles passed as you're presenting them, and I divide it by the projected student enrollment of 775, you are asking the taxpayers to pay on a per-pupil basis $23,644 per student. That's a lot of money. That's almost private school costs. In fact, I think Andy had a list on his Amherst Today with private schools. It's actually more than some of the private school costs. So, I go back to the same issue. I think we, you know, one of the things that I had asked at the November board meeting was to look at the master schedule and look at the overall support ratios. And I went to a meeting on Monday, and I found out that the master schedule was just given out to some of the board members on Monday. Didn't leave a lot of analysis to look at staffing levels for teachers. And that's separate, that's only a teaching level check. That's separate from the whole issue of other support. We have 53% teachers, 47%, we're almost a one-to-one ratio, support staff to teachers. And it's not the same, if you read my article, it's not the same in other towns. So, again, I think, you know, I've heard you say you're willing to look at it next year. I don't know the next, I think you're going to vote to proceed to put these warrant articles for the deliberative. I don't know if that needs to be done tonight, or if there's time to do another revision of the budget and look at some of the staffing issue before the deliberative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maggie. Anyone else from the public question to speak? Go ahead. Yes?
So, if somebody were to ask you, let's cut this proposed budget by 10%, who is responsible for making that recommendation? Just so the people could see what it might look like, and let them decide, I wouldn't like it.
Well, the board would be the one to ask the administration to do that.
The board? There's no one person? There's no executive in charge of this?
We each have an equal vote in the board. So, no, there's not one person.
So, would anybody propose to do that?
No, no one proposed to do that.
If I asked you to do it, would you do it and publish it?
Oh, you mean just for the sake of looking at it?
I would like to see, suppose somebody said, I want 10% I would like to see, suppose somebody said, I want 10% off that 17 million-dollar budget, and here's what would the impact be? Could that be done, so people could get a feel for it?
I am not sure.
I'll, I'll volunteer to do it, if you'd like.
Adam, I'm not, and I'm not sure I understand the question. You just want to know, because obviously, it's very easy to understand what 10% of 18, our 18 million-dollar budget is. You want to see what would be caught if we caught 10%? Is that what you're asking?
The budget, the one I look at? No, if I read it correctly, it's 17 million dollars, right? Of the total budget.
Our proposed budget? Yeah, it's about 18,1, as I said, yeah.
Okay, so let's say we want to drop it 10%. What would happen? What would be the recommended way of doing that?
I can't answer that.
Well, can I try to answer that? If you tried to just randomly cut 10%, you're talking about another 1.8 million dollars out of the budget.
Correct.
You would have a devastating impact on the quality of education. What you have to understand is the budget process that we go through. Last year, there was a cut of about, I forget the number, but about $700,000 was cut out of the budget because we were focusing on costs. We wanted to reduce costs. So that was our starting point this year, when you ask about the default budget. We would have loved to have kept it exactly the same, but with over 850,000, or a number in that order of magnitude of...
960.
960,000 of increases that were mandated by the state or driven by special education costs. That was an additional $960,000 we didn't account for last year that had to be overcome. We did take cuts. We reduced that to where we're only increasing it by $300,000. But what, what you have to understand is the budget process. There was a budget that was proposed. The initial budget was about a 5% increase, but then we spent a lot of time and a lot of hours going through line by line, trying to come up with the best result. What we have all agreed on, based on the work we did, is this budget that minimizes the impact of the cost but maintains the quality of the education. That's the process we went through. Yes, we would love to have it down by another $2 million, but you can't do that while still addressing the, the educational needs of the students. That's the difficulty.
So what would the quality of education that would be affected? How do you measure that? Is that class size? And if, if I'm going to send my kid to college, they're not going to be in a classroom with 12 people. They're going to be in a lecture hall.
Yeah, with, with the three TAs associated with it, with extra classes on top of it. My kids are going through that, too. I understand that.
As I said, we did not ask the administration to cut an additional 10% above the $400,000 that we cut. So I, we, none of us, you know, can answer you what exactly would be impacted. We, as I said, we started off, and Pete just reiterated, with almost a million dollars of increases before we even started looking at what we could buy, what we could cut, what, you know, classes we could offer, and, you know, we felt like we did a very...
I understood all that, but where specifically would that 10%? Suppose it was...
I've already said, sir, that I can't...
Double the class size? We would reduce the teachers in half? We would cut out all the buses?
There's been zero research going down that way, so to answer that now wouldn't make any sense. We couldn't tell you specifically where it would be. Because do something that drastic would have such a major impact. You couldn't possibly estimate what it would be now.
I would venture to guess that all of those things you just mentioned would be affected, including and not just limited to those. I mean, athletics, co-curriculars, but again, it's not something that we...
So the parameters, the parameters that run the budget are set by this committee, and the people that pay the money don't get any input to that. That's what you're telling me. I can't, I can't say I would like that class size to be increased by 20%. It's off the table. Yes or no? It's off the table?
Well, I guess what I would say is, the intention of this hearing is to receive feedback from the public, and so we do listen and value feedback. However, we can't answer you, answer specific questions about what a 1.8 million dollar cut would look like.
Okay, but...
And no, if you want to set class sizes, I would venture to say, I would say no. You know, we are elected officials, we are responsible. One of our primary responsibilities is budget. Budget and policy are our two primary responsibilities. We do, as I said earlier, work very hard...
To the taxpayer or to the school?
Excuse me?
To whom is the responsibility? To the taxpayers or to the school?
Well, our responsibility...
SAU, whatever they are.
I would personally say my responsibility, I feel, is to the taxpayer, but I think I would put the student before that, because that's why we're elected, is to ensure that the students are educated well. But we also are fiscally responsible to the taxpayer, and we work very hard to try to control the costs in thoughtful ways. And I know it sounds very easy...
I understand that. All I'm asking is a hypothetical question, is why this process goes this way. And some of these decisions, like class size, are not qualitative. There's some that says, oh, I think it would, it would disrupt this kind of process. I don't think I agree with that. I will stop now.
We have a class size that we keep in mind. The teachers that are in the budget, we, as a district, have a class size that we have, that has been published.
Those are the parameters that I would like to see enumerated as how these decisions come about, and specifically stated, so that I, as a voting person, can say, okay, I agree with that.
They're not hidden. We talk about these at a lot of the board meetings, so if, you know, if you pay attention, then you would know what the numbers are.
Okay.
So we're not here to go over the policy of how we set class. We have a budget process that we went through, and that's it. We can't go into hypothetical situations to randomly cut 10%.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to have to, you know, if you have brief comments now, unfortunately, we're running out of time because the Amherst School District is presenting after us, and they need to start their presentation at seven. But go ahead, Mike, and if you could just make it as brief as possible.
Mike Akiliyan, Tenel, Mont Vernon Road. Just a clarifying question. Pete, you just said that all of you as board members have agreed that this is the right budget to go forward with, and I want to make sure that that's a true statement.
Well, Mike, you'll see that on the ballot. We vote, as you know, and the vote will be on the ballot. Go ahead.
I'm Suzanne Burchard, Six Alden Lane. I just wanted to say that the school board meetings are open to the public, and I think it's a great idea if people go to them regularly through the year if they want to stay more informed, or look at the streams that are, you can click to on the SAU website.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? We've got a few minutes, a couple of minutes, I should say. Okay, I'm looking at that.
Lynn Brink's Golden Pond. I've got a couple of questions. I believe it was Steve that made the comment that it's the philosophy of the school that, that drives the student-teacher ratio. So it's my understanding that if the public, the taxpayers, feel that we need costs to come down, that we're not getting cost-of-living raises, that we're paying higher health care, that we don't have the luxury of getting built-in state-mandated raises, that you, as the school board, if we ask you, if we implore you to lower the tax rate, that it is your job to go to the school and say, the taxpayers are looking for some cuts. So that is my understanding. It comes from you if we ask it. And again, going back over the philosophy, maybe the philosophy needs to change a little bit. If we're working a nine-to-one ratio and some classes a four-to-one ratio, I think it needs to come back into more state lines of 20-to-one or 18-to-one. I don't think it's right to just say, this is what we believe, when the taxpayers are struggling to pay their bills. There has to be some kind of agreement. My other question was, for the 65,000 that you wanted to go and add to, or is the slush fund? I want to know, number one, is that going to go towards the transgender bathroom? Is that considered the slush fund? I would also like to know, does it go towards things that the insurance policy should be, insurance policy should be covering? I thought I heard unexpected or accidents. I would think the insurance policies would cover that. And I think that's it. I just have a few questions about that, because it seems that you should be driving the conversation, since you are the school board, with the school, asking for bigger reductions.
Thank you for your comments. And, you know, unfortunately, yeah, Frank, unfortunately, we have run out of time. We've actually gone over. I know I was...
Well, let me just say, and I will, just listen a minute. I want to respond to Peter. Because if you look to the north of us in Bedford, and you look to the south of us in Hollis, both of those towns educate their kids for two to three million dollars less than we do, and their academic outcomes are much better than ours. So the educational quality does not have to suffer if you have lower costs or higher classes.
Well, thank you for your opinion, Frank. So we're going to call the public hearing to a close. It is now 7:02, and the board will recess to the main office. Thank you all for coming.